Call immediately to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Ken Beck, who passed away recently and was a coach here. What other positions do you hold?
High school guidance.
High school guidance, counselor.
President of the school board.
President of the school board as well. It will take a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll adjourn this meeting in his honor tonight.
I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here and move the agenda for two presentations so we can have Mrs. Bonnie Dams and Lori Sadow. I probably said your name wrong, but that's Sadow. What is it?
Sadow.
Sadow, okay. I was close. Do the class of 2026 senior class trip.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Awesome. Okay, um, do we have that to go up? Do you guys have the presentation? We'll just wait a second.
You do have the presentation in front of you.
Very happy to see we have some of our classes here. We have Landon, Caitlin, Jack, and I believe we have two of our officers showing up shortly. So while we're waiting for this, we'll just go over upcoming events we have since we have you. Junior prom is coming up on May 31st. We invite you to stop in. We're very excited about that. Looking ahead, we have senior prom planned. That's going to be Thursday, June 18th, which is the day before Juneteenth, and that's at Winding Hills Golf Course. Anything else coming up? We have junior senior day coming up on June 3rd. We have two of our class officers just walking in. Tyler Dams, our treasurer, and Jonathan Coniker, our secretary. Okay, so next year's senior trip, we have planned for Ocean City, Maryland. It's very similar to the trip that was taken by the class of 2024, two years ago, run by Laney and Tammy. So there's not a lot of difference. You can see we're going to Ocean City, Maryland with Hershey Park. It's going to run from Friday, June 5th to Sunday, the 7th. I'm not going to insult you by reading all this because you have it in front of you, but day one consists of, that's our travel day, we will be going to a restaurant once we get there. Then we have a fun night of go-karts and boardwalk. Day two consists of the beach and our nature trip, sorry, nature cruise. And day three is Hershey Park.
And our travel back home.
And obviously, we're coming home that day. The cost is all outlined in your packet. It is dependent on how many students go. The price that is listed for the payments is based on a four-person occupancy ocean view hotel. It's also based on 50 students. So the price will go up depending on how many students are going and whether or not they choose to have single rooms or who they choose to room with. The insurance. So I did get from the travel agent, we're using Four Winds Travel Agency, which is typically who we use. That is also, the last page lists the insurance information. We do have a packet that has the entire insurance. It was a very long document, so it was 10 documents. We didn't copy that. The travel agent told us that most people don't take it, but it is a group insurance based on at least 10 students taking, so it is available for them. But like I said, that most, we have never taken it, but it is available.
The insurance is listed. I left a packet on each side.
Good?
It's pretty simple.
All right. Board members, any questions? If not, entertain a motion to modify the agenda and pull 13.4 to the top of resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, discussion? All those in favor?
A minute. Mrs.
Lori, I'm sorry. How do you pronounce your name again?
How do you pronounce your name again, Lori?
Sadow.
Mrs. Sadow, Mrs. Dams, thank you very much for structuring the payment the way that you have. You know, while $875 is not a small amount of money, you know, breaking it up over 10 payments, I think is very helpful to the community. So thank you for that. And it looks, and also thank you for being creative enough to sort of add a feature on the way back from Maryland and stopping in at Hershey Park.
And I also want to talk about, I want to talk about the payments a little bit. We have a ton of fundraising opportunities, and we sent out just recently an email to each student knowing what's in their fundraising account, so they know exactly what they need to still raise, what they have in their accounts. So there's no question whatsoever, and they also have a list of the upcoming fundraisers for next year, so they know exactly, you know, what they do, need to do, or not do.
Mr. President, I'd like to learn a little bit more about how the class funds work. How the class funds work, who administers the class, what the function of the class accounts are, and how long class accounts exist.
We'll have that information at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Or the meeting after.
And our.
I said next meeting. I spoke too soon. She said, "or the meeting after."
Yes, ma'am.
And if anybody ever wants to see our, how our spreadsheets are listed and what's in the general fund, what's in individual accounts, you're welcome to see.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for giving the kids the opportunity to fundraise. Sometimes on these trips, people question, "Well, why can't everybody go?" and all those types of things. Is Jack in this class?
Yes.
Okay, so I know I'm already getting strong-armed for whatever chocolatey things you're selling next year. Krispy Kremes, whatever. So he's going to be probably the top fundraiser.
The pancakes are amazing.
Oh, okay. But I'm sure that that's a great thing for the kids to be able to earn what they're taking there. So thank you for that and have fun.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, no one. Thank you very much for the information. And gentlemen, have a nice, great time on your trip.
Thank you.
Take care.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Lori, Bonnie, are these the class officers?
These are two of our class officers. Some of our class officers had games tonight.
Sure.
So they couldn't make it, but this is our treasurer and our secretary.
Hello, gentlemen. How are you? Mr. President, I'd like to invite the class officers to a meeting officially. Maybe not this year, but definitely next year. I'd like to know who the class officers are. I think it's important for them to see the board. I'd also like to understand what their functions are.
Done. We'll have it next year.
I want to learn. Yeah. Thank you.
And we are available for any questions at any time.
Yeah, if there's anything you would like to ask us or any information, please reach out.
You're going to be sorry you said that to Willie.
He's an ELSE member now, so he can ask me anytime.
All right, have fun, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
If I could, could you guys sit down a second? I could just take a moment to publicly thank everybody. Obviously, most of you know what me and my family are going through right now. 25 years ago, I walked into this building as a 21-year-old naive, Rondow graduate, never thinking that this would become my family. So I, you know, not just supportive of me, but of my son, my husband, and I just want to publicly say thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we will go to the approval of minutes. Entertaining motion for the approval of minutes of April 22nd, 2025, been moved, seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of April 29th, 2025 special meeting. Moved?
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries. Public forum for this evening. I can take an educated guess and say no one. We will move on to our public hearing for this evening, 4.1, Mr. Napoli, budget hearing.
Thank you very much. Tonight is our, the budget hearing for our budget vote, which happens next week. This was a short presentation, everything that I'm presenting tonight. I've presented in quite detail. All of my presentations are up on the district's website. Newsletters have been mailed, and budget booklets are out in the post offices now, post offices now as we speak. So quick comparison from year to year, the budget is up 5.97 percent. The tax levy is up 4.52 percent. Here I present the admin program and capital. In another slide, I'll tell you what each of those components look like, and those percentage changes, as well as the dollar values, are presented on this slide here. Our revenues, we did get some, the final run from the state for our state aid. There was a very small change. I think what was, it was down like $3,300, a very minimum amount. We did get the 2% in foundation aid, but this is our revenue from year to year. So we're looking at, these are the changes. We have federal aid, other revenues, state aid, and like I said, I've talked about these in our previous budget workshops. So the important part here, or a more detailed part, talk about the three components, the admin program and capital. I remember talking about what each of them represent a couple meetings ago, but administratively, it's the Board of Education, the curriculum instruction, the business office, central copying, any audits that we do, the expenses that are involved with administration for each of the buildings, some of our BOSIs or special education, athletics, everything that's on the administrative side. Then we have program. If you think about program, that's how we teach our students. So that's teaching, special education, the library media center, sports, district-wide, general supplies, textbooks, summer school, professional development, anything that's in our AV computer department, that's under program. And then capital, a quick summary there is the operation of our buildings, the maintenance of our buildings, safety and security, when we borrow money, debt service, maintaining our HVAC systems, that's all under the capital component. I'm not going to give everybody all the numbers, but if you want to look at the numbers of how they break down for those three-part budget, that's what this slide is. The Ellenville Public Library vote did pass, so this, the numbers here are a little bit different, but not that much. So what's on this slide here is what, right now, we don't know what the apportionment or the equalization rates are going to look like when we levy the tax in the fall, but this is what it looks like right now, using the numbers that we have right now. And so at the bottom of this slide, if you look at what the estimated monthly chart change would be in someone's tax bill for the town of Aorsing, it would be roughly $13.57. The town of Mamakating, $39.08, and the town of Rochester, $38.13. These are all estimates. They will be finalized in August when we adopt the tax warrant, and then we send out the tax bills. If we have a contingent budget, that means that the budget fails either the first or the second time. There is at a minimum of a $1.3 million difference. Most of that money is, the tax levy cannot be changed from what it is for this school year. So if the budget does fail, then our tax levy cannot be changed from what it is for this year. So that's a big chunk of that. And then also contingent items, a lot of the capital expenditures have to be pulled out of the budget, and we can't spend money on those line items. And this is what a contingent budget would look like. One of the questions that I try to answer every year, is there any benefit if the budget is defeated? The answer is no. We have to make a decision on how we're going to fund our budget, if there is a contingent budget. So there is no benefit to defeating the budget. Registration forms, for those that want to vote that haven't voted yet, they're available in the district clerk's office, or you can register at the county board of elections. The vote is here, and the junior senior high school media center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that's a week from today, that is May 20th. There'll be plenty of parking. We're going to have staff directing people where to go. Any questions? Thank you.
Board members, any questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Napoli.
You're welcome.
Good music, Jim. All right, we do have a nice presentation to make to one of our own board members from the New York State School Boards Association. Board of Excellence Recognition Award is going to go to Mr. John Burns. And it says briefly, "The New York State School Boards Association Board Excellence Recognition Program is designed to acknowledge those board members who strive to continue to expand their governance, knowledge, and skills." Our records indicate that one or more members of the BOSIs Board of Education have earned the award, range from level one to level four. It goes on to talk about the accumulated points necessary and the fact that they are awarding one of these to our own very board member, John Burns. If John would like to come up and be recognized. It does say, "New York State School Boards Association is proud to present the Board Mastery Award", the first one I looked at, thought the Board Mystery Award, I wasn't sure, "to John Burns, Ellenville Central School District, through New York State Schools Board of Excellence Recognition Program, conferring more than 250 points for your ongoing association, professional development, and/or accepting additional leadership roles in 2025, presented by Sandra Ruffalo, President, and Robert S. Schneider, Executive Director." And you have one complimentary training. There you go. John, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Oh, John.
Mr. President, I would like to thank the superintendent for always being supportive of the many trainings that I go to, to try and keep us abroad of all of the changing educational topics that are having, that we're having through the state. And it's been very enjoyable to represent Ellenville in these endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again on your achievement. Move on to discussion items from the previous meeting. The information that you requested, Mr. Bruce, was uploaded into Board Docs. And if you have any further questions, now's the time to discuss the 25-26 school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for providing the information I requested, in addition to the Sullivan County Schools Consolidated Calendar. And I think that that just, looking at this calendar, it illustrates the point that I was trying to make. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to modify the previously approved district calendar for the term 25-26, to open the school district on Monday, December 22nd, and, excuse me, close the school district on Monday, December 22nd, and Tuesday, December 23rd, and open the district on Tuesday, September 23rd, and Wednesday, November 26th.
So you want to close the district on December 21st, did you say?
22nd, 23rd.
22nd, 23rd. Open the district on what two days?
September 23rd.
Which is, which holiday?
September 23rd is Roshana.
Okay.
And Wednesday, November 26th.
That's the half, that's the day before Thanksgiving.
That's correct.
Okay. There is a motion. Do I have a second for the purposes of discussion? It's been moved and seconded. We are now in discussion. Board members, John?
You're looking to have us in school the day before Thanksgiving?
Wow. That's correct.
I just know from a teacher's standpoint, that's one of the priority days of having off during the school year in preparation for the holiday.
The thinking is it'd be a, it would be an exchange for one of the two days before the Christmas holiday, or Christmas Eve, actually. Right? So it goes to build a full two-week block for the winter recess, similar to most of the districts in our neighborhood and counties, Sullivan.
Other board members on this? Oh, Lisa, I'm sorry.
So I have a question, and maybe more for Willie than anybody. Are you suggesting that, thank you, that this be a, that we permanently do away with September 23 and November 26 as days off? Or is this a suggestion because of the, kind of the anomaly of how this two weeks shakes out with the placement of Christmas and New Year's and what are regular federal holidays? You know, because if we're looking to do a two-week block for a winter recess, it might require even more days if Christmas and New Year's falls on a Tuesday or a Thursday, you know what I'm saying? You know, that two-week block might not be as easily attainable, depending upon what day the federal holidays fall on, Christmas and New Year's being federal holidays.
Understood. And this year, yeah, this year, Christmas does fall on a Thursday. So if it were to fall on a Tuesday, every day following, I would assume the district would be closed. So it may prove to be easier under that scenario. So to answer your question, yes, my ultimate goal is in this, in this, in this motion, is to create a two-week block where the district is closed. I think that is the most.
Every year.
Not every year. The motion is very specific to this year.
For this year, right. I'm speaking to this.
This year.
Calendar. That is correct.
That's correct. That's what the motion is specific.
Motion on the floor is for 20.
Motion on the floor is specific to this year.
25, 26.
It does not include an annual closing?
No, that's not what I'm, that's correct.
Right.
Mr. President, I know, Willie, I thought you had brought up prior to this, how our kids were affected with BOSIs on the days that they were closed. Does this help that closure? That are, like, there are times BOSIs closed and we're not? Is that my understanding?
I think that there are snow days and days where not consistent, but I think if you look at the Ulster BOSIs calendar, for the Ulsters schools, for most of our kids that go to the Career Tech, they are in session Monday and Tuesday of that week. Sullivan County is not. We have a small number of students that go to Sullivan County.
Okay, anybody else before we take a vote? Lisa, can I ask your opinion on this?
So we follow the contractual language, and when I put the calendar together, we usually do follow the Ulster County calendar and talk about it and see where we are. I think even in Sullivan County, they're closed November 26th, the Wednesday before. I think the points were taken about that day being kind of more of a hardship for travel and such. But really, I put a calendar before you, and collective wisdom of the board, I'll do, you know, whatever you'd like. But I think that we, the reason why I put forth, what I did, is because most of our kids go to Ulster BOSIs, and we have been following the Ulster BOSIs calendar.
There are times where you put our collective wisdom up and then regretted it.
Well, I do think that we're following the Ulster BOSIs calendar. We have been in the past.
Anybody else before we vote on this? If not, I will roll call this vote. Jody?
Stay with what we have.
John? Good with the motion?
Yes.
Support the motion, yes, okay. Ethan?
I support the motion.
Lisa Ramirez?
I'm a no.
Willie Bruce?
I'm a yes.
And I am a yes, but the motion fails. 4-2. So the motion fails. We'll stay with the calendar. Yes, Lisa.
Is it too late for, is it, would it make, could we maybe approach the community about some of these holidays? And is it time to look at days that we give off, what days are important? Are we missing days? Like, I, you know, I voted no because I really don't have an understanding of how, whether, how important Wednesday before Thanksgiving is to people, or, but maybe we could look at this or ask the community for input on the school calendar, and if it is time to consider a two-week block in the middle of the school year, if that, if people would love to have that, or if they really want to hold on to Rosh Hashanah and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. If there's, you know.
I think that's a slippery slope that we'd be going down, but certainly like an informal monkey, survey monkey.
Yeah.
As a tool, non-binding, obviously, so that management could just take a look at where there's some opinion out there.
Yeah, that's all I'm suggesting. Not a, we will do, you know, just take the temperature because there are other holidays that maybe are, you know, maybe absenteeism is starting to go up because of observances in different communities that we just aren't in tune to.
Some of the holidays that we used to do, a lot of are falling by the wayside, you know, in my opinion. The two-week block that Willie suggested, it certainly makes sense. I mean, if you look at statistically, the number of sicknesses during those that occur right after the holidays, you know, there's a spike in it, and, you know, there's a lot of sense to what he said, you know, a lot of, you know. And then there's the argument about the day before Thanksgiving, right? So what do you cut? What's important? What do you don't cut?
That's what I say. I agree that, and I see that maybe that two weeks would be amazing, but, and maybe people would love to have it, and maybe the staff would love to have it, but I don't know. I've spoken to you guys about it, and that's it.
Fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, the state puts some mandates on us about other holidays that we have to have. And if we didn't have those holidays, the two-week would have been easy for you to decide, right?
There were two additional holidays that have been added so far. One of them is the Asian Lunar New Year. If you look at the calendar, that's going to be the Tuesday after President's Day and Juneteenth in June. So those are two additional days. So look, we have six snow days next year. If we take those two days away from the snow days, and we've always used more than four, chances are we'll give spring break up, right? And kids will come in, and then you'll see attendance issues on spring break. So it's, depending upon how the calendar falls out, and how the months fall, and how different holidays fall, determinative of, you know, where we add and where we don't add. And we have to start the, we always start after September 1st. So sometimes when September 1st is before Labor Day, we have more flexibility on laying out the calendar. September 1st this coming year and the last year or two, it's been on Labor Day weekend. So we can't start, you know, with the staff, two days, had September 1st sometimes falls on a Thursday and a Friday, you could have your two staff conference days, Thursday, Friday, and start with the students on Tuesday. That would give you two additional student days. So it really is year to year on when you look at this and how the calendar falls out and plays out.
And what about the four, is there four superintendent conference days? How do they play into the equation?
So we have to have 180, have to have 180 student days, of which four superintendent conference days count for that. So we have, we always have our four days. So students have to report in 176 days in order to get all your state aid. If you don't go 180 days, they will deduct a huge amount of money for each day you're below, unless there's some kind of unforeseen extraordinary circumstance.
All right. As you've said, the collective wisdom of board has spoken.
As you've said, the collective wisdom of board has spoken, and we'll move on. Under resolution reports and information, I have nothing. Board membership? John, where are we Hall of Fame?
We'll probably be announcing the Hall of Fame before the end of the month. I think we have four excellent, or five excellent considerations, and as soon as we get the committee together, we'll finalize that and have it before the end of the month.
Thank you. The arts? Jody?
We had a very productive meeting with the staff last week. We do have a date for a arts banquet that we're going to be starting this year and growing on as the years to come, and more to come in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board? If not, we'll move on to Student Representative Jack Henry. Jack?
Good evening. So for happenings and events, the Career Fair will be held tomorrow, all day for grades nine through 12. The Junior Honors Society induction was last Tuesday, and the National Honors Society induction was last Wednesday. So congratulations to all inductees that were instated into those chapters. The honors banquet will be held on Thursday, and the Senior High School Music and the Parks Festival is this Friday. For athletics, the varsity track and field teams won against Highland and host Red Hook tomorrow for their senior night. The softball team won against Dover yesterday and played a doubleheader today against Dover and Highland. Their senior night is tomorrow against Sullivan West. The baseball team went to Cooperstown and won 10-8 against Tri Valley for their senior game. And finally, congratulations to Victoria Bonnetz and Alan Ibrick for being Ellenville's 2025 Mahal Scholar Athletes. Finally, for fundraising, time is ticking, so it is almost time to buy your Blue Devils' merchandise. The link is tinyurl.com/ECSEmerch, or you can use QR code before time runs out.
Thank you. Move on to Superintendent Lisa Wiles.
So a few things I want to report. A few things. When the budget, New York State budget got passed this year, there was some legislation, there's always legislation embedded in a budget bill that really deals with policy. One of those things this year has to do with a smart device, cell phone restriction banned. It's a bell-to-bell ban, so to speak. So starting in September, students will no longer be able to have smart devices during instruction time and non-instructional time, including homeroom periods, lunch, recess, study halls, and passing time. They'll have to be put away in a storage area. One area could be a locker, and we're looking at other options. We will be bringing some recommendations to the board. Embedded in the law, there has to be methods for parents to contact their students during the day. In our district, every classroom has a phone, and in the offices, there are phones that are available to our students. We will be putting out written notifications to parents prior to the beginning of the school year. We'll be addressing the requirement of online storage, excuse me, onsite storage, one or more methods on where and how students can store their devices. There is an allowance for students if it's determined by the CSE to be permissible, if someone has an IEP or a 504 plan. The other thing is, is that we'll have to look at some disciplinary rubrics because the legislation is very specific that no suspension can happen on the sole violation of the smart device policy. That's just for having it. But if you're asked to put it away, and you're insubordinate to put it away, there's a question, and we'll have more guidance on that. We are in the process of working with the attorneys and some policy services that we do to put together a draft policy. The policy committee will be working on it. We'll have to continue to modify our code of conduct where we address cell phones, and we'll have more information. This policy has to be in place by July 31st for the start of the new school year, so there'll be much information coming out. We did meet this today with the junior senior high BLT. Another requirement of the bill is that, or the legislation is that you get stakeholder input. So that would be BLT, survey, PTO, bargaining units will be reaching out to the student council, see what their, you know, input is on it, and we're talking about putting a survey out to the community for input. So we're in the process, came out last year. I did give you the nuts and bolts of the legislation, the actual bill, but now we're in the process of interpreting it and looking towards, you know, state ed to see where we are. So more to come, but this is a significant change and shift on what schools will look like with smart devices next year. Not a choice for us. This is a law. I did include, moving on, I did include a list of events for you. That's pretty comprehensive. It includes not only our events, but the events of Ulster and Sullivan BOSEs. So take a look at that, but those are, it's pretty packed on what happens between now and at the end of the school year. And I do want to share some, some correspondence. I think we uploaded it in your packet, but we received a, so you know that our school district, our special ed program, hasn't always met all of the goals with regard to state assessments. And we know that we've seen incredible increases this year for special ed and non-special ed, but one of our representatives from state ed, her name is Kimberly Denuzzo, she is what we call the regional associate. She is our liaison with state ed with regard to special education. And she wrote a letter that I just want to read to you quickly. Dear Teacher, Staff, Administration at the Ellenville Central School District, let me take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Kim Denuzzo, and I'm the New York State Education Department Regional Associate for the Education of Students with Disabilities for the Ellenville Central School District, as well as other districts in Sullivan and Ulster Counties. My job is to assist districts with improving outcomes for students with disabilities. I work collaboratively with Jess Mataraz and Kristen Rabati to ensure that all students with disabilities in the district are provided with the rights and protections afforded by them by state and federal regulations, as well as provide support to the Regional Partnership Center as they assist the district in many areas of special education. Want to reach out to provide you with some information that's recently been brought to my attention. Recent data regarding the performance of students with disabilities on ELA exams in English Regents has been released, and I took the opportunity to compare your current data to the data from previous years. So in '22, we had proficiency at 6%, '23, 0%, '24, 12%. ELA, where we were for eighth grade was 0-0, we're at 23%. And for comprehensive English Regents, we were at 27, 51, and then 39%. So the state education department rep is taking the opportunity to say, great job. There's been incredible, you know, growth here, and it's the beginning of the growth that we're seeing and the commitment of the growth. I've never received an email like this from state ed before, so I thought it was important to share that, you know, with you, that we have been seeing it. I do want to thank the staff, especially the, everyone working with the Regional Partnership. The special education department has been working really, really hard, the teachers and the staff, to change practice, to engage in good conversation about best practice in the classroom. And this is just kind of, we keep moving in that direction where we're seeing continued growth. I think it's important to bring that to your attention. You always get the letters that say, you didn't make the growth, you're on a list. So while we might be on a list and, you know, we hear about, oh, we're at the bottom, we are growing, and it goes to, again, us having the most growth of any other school district in the county this year. So I just wanted to share that with the board. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Superintendent Wiles. Move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Vince Napoli.
Thank you very much. I did provide a drawing of the new press box. I hope to put the concession building up on our website so that the community can see what we're working on. I think that's important. I'm working with our architect to discover the pool buildings. The state ed has given us building project numbers on that. So if you remember, with our pool buildings, we have to discover the building before we can tear them down. That's just the process that the state is requiring us to do. There are plenty of photos regarding the new concession stand. I'll pick the better of them to put them up on our website. I've been providing minutes and details to all of our bills and our construction meetings. We did have a suggestion of four models of our scoreboards for out on the football field. The coaches, as well as the athletic director, got together and they thought that 3682, which is a 20-foot-long board with a custom digital team names, that's the one that they kind of liked, and it adds the football symbol to indicate the possession of what, of the ball. Let me just keep going down here. Let me go back to that page. 3682, that's the second one on my bullets. That's the one that the coaches and the AD picked out. I'm open to bring anything back to them. Is that picture not there? All four of them are not there? All right, I'll double-check to see what happened with that. Maybe I have a different name. I know there's a lot of, a lot of attachments in there.
I think it is the one at the bottom, but it's not a picture. It's just the-
Well, there's concession 19 underscore 1, 19 underscore 7. There's a whole block of them that say Ellenville Concession. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 of them. They start with Ellenville Concession. There's a whole bunch of different ones in there. And then there's the floor plan, which is the one that I'm really going to share with people to see what it looks like. That's PP8 underscore ECSD underscore bathroom concession stand dash floorplan.pdf.
Is it? Great photo. That's Ellenville Concession Stand 0119 dash 30. It's a great photo. It shows a side view of the concession stand.
Those are nice renderings that the architect has done for us. They're really, I'm pretty impressed so far with their 3D renderings and some of the products that they've provided to us when we asked them for it. So that's pretty nice. We did meet earlier, so when did we meet with Green County? What's today, Tuesday? So last week? We, if you remember, I mentioned that Catskill Hudson Bank was sold to a credit union, so we can't do business with a credit union. It's a state law. So regarding our tax collection, we met with the Bank of Green County. They support two schools in Ulster County, as well as a lot of schools up in Green County, up into the capital region. They can meet our needs. One of the things that came up, and we've been, I've been bringing this up in my report and we've been talking about, is whether or not we want to collect cash here. We're trying to work out the logistics of that, not having a local bank that will collect our taxes if we get cash, but we are working through some of those details. Something that came out from Whittson's, our food service contractor, they are taking a proactive approach. This will be for the next school year. I know we're going to have some students that are, that are kind of upset with what I'm about to say, but they're removing food dyes from school meals. That's a mandate, and they're being proactive. That's going to happen next year. So what does that mean? That could mean that Dorito chips that have red dye in it, we might not be able to offer them anymore. So we're, they're coming up with other ways to be able to provide food that our students like. One of the things that I learned today was that strawberry-flavored milk that has a dye in it to make it, it's the strawberry color, so they're coming up with-
Now you've gone too far. Strawberry Nesquik?
I know, I know, right. And I asked about chocolate milk, but that's with cocoa.
And Doritos?
So that's okay. Doritos, correct. They have dye in it, so we're not going to be able to offer them.
People can go buy them over town and bring them in when they're on-
That is correct. I just can't serve them, we can't serve them in the cafeteria.
What are we going to be forcing?
I don't know, we're working on it. I know, I know, this is probably of all the things that I'm talking about, this is going to be the most controversial thing. You can't have Doritos.
I'm going to feel like I'm out in the field grazing, for God's sakes, Vince. Can we have french fries at least?
We do have french fries, and we actually, we bake them now. We don't fry them. And french fries are, french fries are good in the cafeteria. We've all, we've all eaten there, and they're not bad, I have to tell you.
That's insane.
We, just wrapping up an OSC audit for our tax cap, I got, in my report, I did have a conversation with the auditor, and everything seems to be in order, but you never know until you get the final letter saying that the, that the audit, they call it a review, they're here to help, is finalized. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
That's enough from you. All right, we'll move on to Deputy Superintendent Kelly White.
Good evening. There are a couple things in my board report, but what I do want to share, and I know I've mentioned it the last two meetings, but the event finally happened. On May 1st, our students Caleb, Nora, Roldan, and Henry Jones were officially inducted into New York State MBK Fellows Program. And I really want to give a shout out to them and the other two students we brought, which was Sebastian Ortiz and Nishan Abney, who we'll look to and get inducted next year. But our students really stood out in the crowd. At one point, I just kind of looked around the room and saw kids on their cell phones, or kids with their heads down, or kids yawning, and our kids were sitting up straight and they were attentive. And in a room of over 1,100 people raised their hands and were called on to make contributions, and it was just such a proud moment for us as a district to have our students there. And that, you know, really goes to speak to the work that Mr. Mulhern and Dr. Espinoza and Ashley Knox does through programs like MBK and Go Beyond Greatness, where they've really instilled this confidence and this social presence in our young men, and I'm just so proud of them, and I can't wait to see how they continue to grow over the next year.
Thank you, Mrs. White. We will move on to Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Curriculum, and Instruction Support, Mr. Scott Prokosh.
Good evening. We had the opportunity to attend student showcases for the Seal of Bilinguacy. We have nine of our 11th and 12th grade students who presented to a teacher panel as part of the requirements for the Seal of Bilinguacy, and these students had to do a presentation of a research of their choosing in a language other than English. And we have some students that are monolingual and have learned a foreign language and did it fluently enough to present completely in that language, and were also able to answer questions from panelists in that language. And they just demonstrated an extraordinary skill and talent to be able to present and work their way towards receiving the Seal of Bilinguacy. So we want to congratulate those students.
Thank you, Mr. Prokosh.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Prokosh, will those students be recognized in any way by whoever sponsors the Seal of Bilinguacy? I'm sorry, is that, what is, is that the-
Yep, it's the Seal of Bilinguacy. So this is one step in many steps in order to receive that seal. So yes, we will acknowledge the students if they complete all the requirements.
It's a process.
It's a process, yes.
And a program?
Yes.
Gotcha. Excellent. Well, we applaud those students. Looking at your report, Mr. Prokosh, thank you very much for including the pre-screening feature to our interview process. I think it goes a long way to helping to filter through the applicants and potential candidates. I think it's a step toward efficiency.
Thank you.
Well done. I wonder, Mr. President, if it'd be possible to talk to, to talk to the Madam Superintendent and her team, and possibly Mr. L. about translating our meetings into a second language or into Spanish and/or whatever other language is, whatever other secondary language, no disrespect intended, is prevalent in our community, and having that done by a student and awarding community service hours for it.
Well, the superintendent get together and give us a response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokosh. We'll move on to resolutions for this evening. Under 8.1 Juul Agreement, upon resolve that the Board of Education in the Ellenville Central School District accepts the terms stated in the Juul Agreement dated April 22, 2025, between the district and employee number 3163, and upon such terms extends the probationary period. It's been moved, seconded, discussion. Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns.
I just was wondering if maybe we could do some more training with the administration. There seems to be some wide discrepancies in evaluations across the board. And I'm wondering if we're all on the same page in what we're looking for. So, that's my, that's my suggestion for that.
Yeah. I'll have the superintendent respond to you.
So, every summer, we've been really working on this and going deeper with the trainings that we're doing. But we intend to go deeper, to work on the calibration and making sure that people are looking at things. Everyone's got a different, you know, view. But there's some standard on what to look at. I think it's gotten better over the last, you know, two years, a lot of growth this year, but we will continue to work on it. Your points will take in, Mr. Burns.
Thank you. We'll move on to 8.2, intramural resignation. Oh, excuse me. We'll go back to vote on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Oh, one. Mr. Burns. 8.2, intramural resignation. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Katie Burns for elementary intramural softball be accepted effective May 1st, 2025.
Some of them.
Moved. Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? 5-1. It passes. Intramurals resignation. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Joseph Barrera for intramural girls soccer, grade 7, 12, be accepted effective April 29th, 2025.
Some of them.
Then moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
What's happening with the resignations from the intramural positions?
Careful here, because this is going to fall under Personnel for Executive Session.
No. This is a general question about two resignations that are on public agenda.
The reasons why may be relegated to Personnel under Executive Sessions.
Good enough.
I'll rephrase the question here. It's a concern that I've brought up before, that staff members take positions and then back out, and it leaves us short when we're trying to build programs. I understand there could be personal issues as to why someone would have to do it, but it always leaves us short when people back out. And I think, to Willie's point, it's happened fairly frequently in the past. So, maybe we could get something from Matt on that, on why that's happening. That could just be a general thing, not concerning individual people. Certainly, we don't know what people's reasons are, but it does leave us short when we're trying to build up, in this instance, our athletic program.
Thank you, Trustee Burns.
Thank you. Can you get that response from Matt? Thank you. Under 8.1, we got to vote on that one, too. Here we go. Keep getting us sidetracked here. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No. Intramural sports. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that the following individuals be approved for the intramural sports for 2024, 2025. It's been moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
I'd just like to recognize, Mr. President, that both of these individuals are alumni and former athletes coming back to participate in these two programs. And I'd just like to applaud them. I love to see people come back and contribute to the system that they, you know, gain so much from.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. You're opposed? 6.5, Department Chair Resignation. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Jennifer Schoonmaker. Science Department Chair be accepted effective June 30th, 2025.
Some of them.
Moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Teacher aide resignation. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Jeanette Cortez's teacher aide be accepted for the purposes of retirement, effective June 30th, 2025, with regret.
So moved.
Then moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.7, pre-K and kindergarten night screening. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following faculty be approved to work up to seven hours as assigned outside of the school day for pre-K and kindergarten night screening at the hourly rate. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm looking to see if my wife's on here. Is she not? I'm going to abstain. 8.8, home tutor. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Jeanette Kohler be appointed.
Information, Mr. President. We went through that pretty quickly. Most of our motions have a rate of pay with them. This one does not. I think that we should define what that is. It's, I know it says their hourly rate, so that's an individual thing. We usually don't pass...
It is the memo, but we will include it in the language of the resolution.
Thank you.
Home tutor. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Jeanette Kohler be appointed for home tutoring for the 24-25 school year at the contractual rate.
Some of them.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. We're going to go on to Regents Review. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following teachers be appointed for June Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55 per hour work, not to exceed two hours' work per subject for the 24-25 school year.
Some of them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.10, MOA, Memorandum of Agreement. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the Memorandum of Agreement between the Ellenville Central School District and the ETS RPA.
Second.
It's been moved. And seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.11, Building Strategic Planning Committee. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following teachers be approved to work the Building Strategic Planning Committee from May 21st through June 30th, 2025, not to exceed 15 hours at the rate of $41 per hour work.
Some of them.
It's been moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President, what is the, what is the function of the Building Strategic Planning Committee?
Mrs. White?
In short.
Our strategic... Thank you. Our Strategic Action Planning Committee are our school improvement teams. They're responsible for the creation of the district comprehensive improvement plan and the school comprehensive education plans that we're required to have since we're a target district.
Thank you, Madam Deputy.
Lisa?
MO, does it require that, it seems to be department chairs? And I think we just had a previous motion that changed to department chairs, or would that...
So, the existing committee has representatives that are not department chairs. So, we were looking to expand. The current department chair is not resigning until the end of this school year. And the development of the improvement plans for next year is happening at the end of this month, so we would like their voice present on the committee to represent the department.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Could we have a future discussion about this whole department chair thing, since we had a concern brought to our attention? I would hate to see if this is what's going on, where department chairs are feeling like they're not being listened to. I realize the administration has the final say. We know it was considered, but I would like to see all considered. And so, if we could have a future discussion about that, I'd appreciate it.
We will. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 8.12, probation extension. Whereas effective January 15th, 2025, the rules for classified civil service of the County of Sullivan has been modified to provide for probationary periods up to 52 weeks. Whereas prior to January 15th, 2025, the maximum probationary period under the rules of civil service, County of Sullivan, was 26 weeks.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. And we'll move on to 8.13, Cafeteria Monitor Resignation. Upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the resignation of Chris...
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Budget resolutions.
Motion to move 9-1 and 9-2 on the budget resolutions.
It's been moved. Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Education resolutions for this evening?
Motion.
10-1 has been moved.
Second.